Would everybody please rise, I'd like to start the meeting. I'd ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, full and spanned, one nation, underground, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Please be seated. Welcome, everyone. Township of Old Bridge, zoning board of adjustment, November 20, 2025. Adequate notice of this meeting of the Old Bridge Township Zoning Board of Adjustment has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act at least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of this meeting by prominently posting in the municipal complex an announcement giving the time, the date, the location, and the agenda of this meeting, also by mailing such announcement to the home news and Tribune, filing a copy of such announcement with the municipal clerk, and also posting on the municipal website. Vice Secretary Bertelli, can we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Mrs. Andrews?
Present.
Ms. Chevalier? Absent. Mr. Izzo?
Here.
Mr. Scogno?
Here.
Ms. Spinelli?
Here.
Ms. Testaverde? Absent. Mr. Singh? Absent. Ms. Gomez?
Here.
Chairman Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Varga, I'm sorry, Marty, I don't know your last name.
Mr. Buckley.
Mr. Buckley? Ms. Savant?
Yeah.
Mr. Hollahan?
Here.
Thank you very much. Just some housekeeping issues. First of all, this meeting is being televised locally here in the township on the cable, channel fifteen. Simultaneously, it's also available on YouTube Live. You could always refer back to that if you want to see the meeting again. Rules of the board are the meeting starts at seven thirty, ends at ten thirty. Testimony stops at ten, so we have time for public portion thereafter. I don't envision that we're going to be here that late this evening, but we'll see. Having said that, we'll move board members. I would note for the Mr. Sax and Mr. Brodsky, there's six members seated tonight. Six of seven. We'll go to the minutes. That's the first one we have is October sixteenth. Board members, hope you've had a chance to check them out, make sure you agree with them or disagree. Having said that, I'll ask someone to move in for memorialization.
Move it, Leon. Scogno.
Is there a second? Moved in second, roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Chevalier, oh, sorry. Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. The same thing applies to the minutes of October thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Board members, someone move that for adoption.
Second, Scogno.
Moved in second, roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. As you face the dais and you're looking to your left, it's to my right, Martin Brodsky of council to the board. Buckley.
He's Brodsky.
Brodsky's over there. Mr. Buckley is up here.
Yes. Thank you. Resolution?
Yeah, I'm gonna start. I'll read them in. Seventeen dash twenty twenty-five Z, Anthony Franconero, design waiver and C variance. Mr. Buckley.
This is a resolution approving a bulk variance approval for property known and designated as block twenty-six zero thirty-five, lot one seventeen, also known as forty-nine Second Street in Old Bridge, New Jersey, specifically as follows. The lot is an undersized lot where seventy-five hundred square feet is required for the zone, but less exists. Therefore, the resolution grants bulk variance approval to remove an existing deck along the installation, along with the installation of a rear yard patio, as well as connection along the right side of the property from the driveway to the, to the, to the garage, actually. The imposed improvements will bring a total minimum landscape area ratio to forty point zero two percent, where a minimum of forty-five percent is required. And finally, this resolution grants a design waiver for a driveway setback of zero feet, where five feet minimum is required.
Board members, you've heard the resolution read. Someone want to move it, please, for adoption?
Izzo.
Who's move it?
It was Mr. Izzo, followed by Ms. Andrews. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Nineteen dash twenty twenty-five Z, Nathaniel Cruz, design waiver. Mr. Buckley.
This is a resolution approving a design waiver relief for property known and designated as block one-one-two-five-zero, lot fourteen, AKA two-five-nine Ambuy Road in Madawan, specifically as follows. The applicant sought relief to permit the new proposed driveway onto Doyle Road at thirty-nine point five feet from the intersection of Doyle and Anthony Roads, where fifty feet is required. Design waiver relief is required, and the applicant believes it is appropriate because the proposed location of the driveway is a better design alternative, as it allows for easier maneuverability for entering and exiting the proper, property onto Doyle Road. As a condition of the approval, the applicant stipulated that the driveway and property would not be used for commercial purposes.
All right, board members, you've heard the resolution. I'm gonna ask someone to move it. Ms. Andrews was opposed, though she would not vote on that. Someone want to move it? Izzo? Is there a second?
Second, Scogno.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Fourteen dash twenty twenty-five Z, Richard Torado. That's a C and a D variance. Counselor?
This is a resolution approving use density and use variance approval for property known and designated as block four-zero-zero-zero-point-one-three, lot six, also known as twenty-nine Athens Avenue in South Ambuy, specifically as follows. The applicant is proposing a second story addition to increase floor area ratio to forty-six percent, where thirty-five percent is permitted. It was the applicant's opinion that the variance relief could be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, because he is essentially just adding on to his home to allow his family to continue to grow.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley. Someone want to move this for adoption, please?
Izzo?
Gomez, second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Twenty-five dash twenty-five Z, it's Mohamed Sarhan. It's a C variance. Counselor?
This is a resolution approving bulk variance relief for property known and designated as block ten-sixty-five, lot two-seventy-seven-point-one-one, also known as two-seventy-seven Greenwood Drive in Keyport, specifically as follows. The applicant is proposing to legitimize the location of a shed, gazebo, and above-ground swimming pool that were installed by the previous owner. When the current owner purchased the property, he did not know the work was done without permits, and now seeks to rectify that. In order to do so, he requires the following variances. With respect to the ten-by-eight-foot shed, a two-foot rear yard setback, where three feet is required. He also needs variance relief to permit the ten-by-twelve-foot gazebo and above-ground pool to be located in the designated front yard of the property, where said accessory structures are not permitted. Additionally, he requires variance relief for the gazebo, where two-foot yard rear setback is proposed, but three feet is required. He also needs variance relief for the existing patio, which goes to the rear property line, and a zero-foot setback exists, where three foot is required. Finally, he requires variance relief from the permitted landscape area, where forty-five percent exists, and forty-two point zero-three percent is permitted.
Thank you, counselor. Board members, you heard the resolution? Want to move it?
Izzo?
Is there a second?
Gomez.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Thirty dash twenty twenty-five Z, Richard Luparillo, C variance. Counselor?
This is a resolution approving bulk variance relief for property known and designated as block one-five-five-one-three, lot five-sixty-nine, also known as twenty-eight Buttonwood Drive in Old Bridge, specifically as follows. The applicant proposed to replace an existing deck and landing. The new deck is proposed to be one-fifth of foot from the side yard property line, where seven foot minimum is required, and one-point-five feet from the rear property line, where seven feet minimum is required. Furthermore, improvements bring the total minimum landscape area to thirty-eight point six-nine percent, where a minimum of fifty-five percent is required. It's the applicant's belief that the request could be granted pursuant to C-two criteria, insofar as the benefits associated with the variance relief substantially outweigh the detriments.
Once again, board members, you've heard the resolution. Someone want to move it, please?
Izzo?
Is there a second?
Gomez.
Andrews, Ms. Andrews, seconds. Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Thirty-four dish twenty twenty-five Z, it's Nicole Canizio, C variance. Mr. Buckley.
This is a resolution approving bulk variance relief for property known and designated as block one-five-five-five-zero, lot one-seven-three, also known as two Lewis Street in Old Bridge, specifically as follows. The applicant is proposing to legitimize a shed installed by the previous owner. The variance relief that she requires is to permit the accessory, permit the accessory structure, specifically the shed, to be located in the front yard, where accessory structures are not permitted. It was her opinion that the variance relief could be granted pursuant to C-two criteria, insofar as the benefits associated with the relief requested substantially outweigh any detriment, detrimental impacts to the town's master plan, zoning ordinances, or the neighborhood scheme.
Board members, heard the resolution? Move it for adoption, please?
Move it, Scogno.
Is there a second?
Izzo?
Roll call, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. And finally, under resolutions, thirty-seven dish twenty twenty-five Z, Nicholas Francisco. It's a C variance.
This is a resolution approving bulk variance approval for property known and designated as block three-two-three-zero, lot one, lot twelve-point-one-four, also known as two-ninety-one Gordon Road in Old Bridge, New Jersey, specifically as follows. Rear yard setback of sixteen foot, where twenty-five foot is required, and to exceed the accessory building size of six-hundred feet, where one-thousand-twenty-four square feet is permitted, and to exceed the maximum permitted building height of the accessory structure, where fifteen feet is permitted, but nineteen and a half feet is proposed.
Thank you. Board members, someone move that for adoption, please?
Izzo?
Second, Scogno.
Moved in second? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Mr. Buckley, you've had a chance to catch your breath. I'm gonna ask you to swear in the professionals for the evening.
All the professionals could please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
We're gonna take the two homeowner applications first. They're the last two on the agenda, and I'm taking them in order. That's thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-five Z, it's Charles Agardy and Brooke Weber. It's R thirty, a low-density zone. It's block one-three-zero-zero-three, lot one, I'm sorry, lot eleven. The physical location is four-seven-two Tyse Town Road. Requiring a C variance, applicant seeks to build an addition onto an existing home and rebuild the attached garage.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Russell Weber. I'm here representing my daughter and my son-in-law, who acquired the house.
Before you go any further, sir, I'm gonna ask the board to turn and just put you under oath, okay?
Can you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Can you state your name and spell your last?
Russell Weber, W-E-B-E-R.
Okay, go ahead. You can be seated, sir. This is new to me. I don't, I don't recall this ever happening before, so I'm gonna ask counsel if Mr. Weber represents himself as the father of one of the owners of the home, would he be able to do this?
Father-in-law of the other.
Did you enter a notice of appearance on this?
Are you?
You're an attorney?
I am in the building business. I'm, the house is currently being renovated.
Okay.
I am doing the work.
Okay, and what, what are your professional qualifications?
I'm a builder. Been in the building business here, built at least a hundred houses in Old Bridge alone over the last forty-seven years.
This is four-seventy-two Tyse Town? Do you live there?
No, my, my daughter and son-in-law.
Okay, are you familiar?
They own the house.
Are you familiar? How familiar are you with the property?
I built the, I'm building the addition. I'm very familiar with the property, yes.
Okay.
I'm the one that's been handling everything since, since they acquired the house.
Okay, so you can testify as to the appropriate building specs and those things?
Yes.
But anything beyond that?
Correct.
I don't think you'd be able to testify to?
Well, I just want to.
Planning and zoning.
I want to explain the case and why we're here.
Okay.
And hopefully you guys agree with it.
Okay. If it's okay with the board, it's okay with me.
If it's legally okay, I have no problem. The board members, is anybody on my left have a problem with Mr. Weber representing his daughter and his son-in-law?
All right.
Okay, sir, the only thing we, would be proof you have to put on the record, obviously, what we normally say when a homeowner comes up, they're not usually represented by counsel or professionals. I just ask them to tell us the who, what, why, wheres, and whens of the situation, so the board can understand what you're doing, why you're doing it. Mr. Hollahan's the zoning officer here. I'm gonna ask him why you're here for a variance. He'll explain that. We may have some questions of you. You may have some questions of the board.
That's fine.
After you finish your testimony, I'm gonna open a public portion, which I'm required to do. We'll see if anybody stands for or against, or no one comes at all. I'll ask you finally, if you're gonna ask me to take a, if you would ask, you're gonna ask me for a vote this evening. If for some reason you feel you haven't done sufficient, and you feel that there's, you may lose the vote, you could probably ask the board for a continuance. Normally, the board would be in favor of allowing you to do so. So you can go, go along at your own pace, and we'll see what happens from there, okay? Thank you for being here, everybody.
Thank you. As I currently stated, the house now is being renovated, addition is being put on the back of it. Originally, we put in for about a year ago, we had a one-car attached garage, looking at the house on the left-hand side. And because of the combined side yard setbacks, we didn't meet the forty feet, even though we are within, we are well within the left side twenty-foot setback. Long, long time ago, the house was subdivided, even prior before the zoning board was even, was even in the works. I don't know if you guys have, you do have the plan. On the right side of the house, we have eighteen foot nine in the front, and nine foot three in the back. On the left-hand side, we have thirty-six point three, where the side yard setback is supposed to be twenty foot. The right side, unfortunately, we can't do anything about it. That was done way before we were even around. But the left side, we're still going to hold, so we're gonna continue the left side twenty-foot setback. We're not gonna encroach on that at all. We're not gonna put a seventeen, what we're proposing is a seventeen-foot, single-car garage on the left side. But because of the combined forty-foot yard setback, that's why we're here in front of you now, is for a, for a variance for that, for a waiver for that. Do you want to do, we're also in for a pole barn in the back. You want to do?
Whole thing.
The whole thing, all together? Okay. All right. The house, as you can see in the plan, there's an existing pole barn, which is roughly thirty-two by thirty foot, or I should say, a framed building, which was a garage, shed, whichever, from previous owners. That is thirty-two by thirty-five. We want to remove that and put a new one up that's safer. This one is demolished, it's, it was dangerous, it's caving in, it's unusable and unsafe. We want to put a new one in. What I, what the building department has now, I believe it's twenty-four, twenty-five-foot by thirty-foot pole barn, which they have all the paperwork for. And that's what we're, that's what we're proposing now, to, to take the place of the old, existing, dilapidated, dangerous barn that is there now. That, I, I think the side yard setbacks need to be twenty, but the, the original one is thirteen foot off the back right corner, and twenty feet off the front right corner. We would like to either put it on, in the same pad, a new barn, pole barn, or if we can move it back another forty feet, we would like to do that also.
Anything else for now, sir?
No.
So the thirty-two by thirty-five is gonna be demoed, right? Removed?
Correct.
And you're gonna replace it with twenty-four by thirty?
Correct.
Seven-hundred-and-twenty square foot? Mr. Hollahan?
Mr. Weber, just to confirm what Chairman Sullivan just said, I know there's an existing thirty-two by thirty-five. Your application was for a twenty-four by thirty-five.
Okay. Sorry, I don't, if that's what the application, yeah, I don't have that with me.
Is your intention to replace it with what you applied for, the twenty, the twenty-four by thirty-five?
I think, I think at this point, yes.
Okay.
That's what we'd like to do.
Okay, so you're proposing a twenty-four by thirty-five detached garage?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's where the building department has the specs on that already.
Okay. Chairman, I'll start with the addition. As Mr. Weber said, I really don't have much to add, but it, it's a two-story addition, attached garage on the first floor. It's one-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-six square feet. The only thing he doesn't meet is the combined side yard setback that proposes thirty-point-three feet, where forty minimum is required. where forty minimum is required. Um, he does meet the one side yard setback at twenty feet, but because of that existing non-conforming, um, eight-foot, nine-foot setback on the right-hand side, um, he's unable to meet that combined side yard. So it's that single C variance for the combined side yard for the addition. Um, as far as the proposed detached structure, or pole barn, we'll call it, in the back, it is, I believe you said, seven-hundred-and-twenty square feet.
It's gonna be eight-forty, right, 'cause it's twenty-four by thirty-five?
Twenty-four by thirty-five is eight-forty, so the building is proposed at eight-hundred-and-forty square feet, where a maximum of six-hundred square feet is required. So it's a bulk variance for building size. Um, and Mr. Weber, just to confirm, the existing setback right now is thirteen feet off the side yard, where twenty feet is required. You're proposing to keep that existing side yard?
If we could, yes.
Okay.
The front, the front right corner will be twenty, so that will comply.
Okay.
But the back right corner is only thirteen feet.
Okay.
So if we could just take that and slide it back another forty feet.
Okay. So I think Chairman, just kind of, and Mr. Buckley, just for the record, so the frame building in the back will be demolished, it will be replaced with a twenty-four by thirty-two, uh, by twelve-foot-high detached structure, uh, with a thirteen-foot side yard where twenty feet is required, and eight-hundred-and-forty square feet where six-hundred square feet is required.
But one, one thing, if I could, we'd like to try to put a fourteen-by-fourteen door in there, because they have a camper. And, uh, the maximum height for campers are thirteen foot six.
Okay.
So we'd like to be able to back the camper in there winter time if we had to do repairs or something on it. So we'd like to try to see if we can do a fourteen-by-fourteen door, which means we would have to go to maybe nineteen, twenty-foot high. Because with the pitch-
Okay.
It'll be roughly four foot of attic space, sixteen-foot ceiling height, which would give you roughly a four foot of attic space.
Do you have any chance to have plans available for that?
To have a, to have a, a three, a minimum of a three-on-twelve pitch. No, I do not.
No, okay. The board wouldn't consider the garage door itself. They would have to consider the variance for the height of the structure, 'cause fifteen is the maximum, and if at most he's proposing twenty, uh, I will defer to Mr. Buckley if, at this point, we can just add on that variance request.
Uh, at this point, we could, again, if we're just looking at the total height of the building and the, the garage door, I don't-
Now, Mr. Weber, just to confirm, the height, by our definition, is from grade to the top of the ridge.
Correct, okay.
And that-
Just like with a regular house.
And that height we're saying is twenty-four, is what he's asking for?
Twenty.
Twenty.
You're asking for twenty?
Yes.
Not twenty-one?
Well, no, no.
If it winds up being twenty-one, you gotta come back.
No, well, you'd have, you'd have a fourteen-foot high, for it to be sixteen foot to the ceiling. I, I would need at least twenty feet to have a minimum of a three-on-twelve pitch.
Okay.
So twen- twenty foot, we can make it work.
Okay. So Chairman, Mr. Buckley, just for the record, for the detached structure in the back, it would be three separate variance requests: the building size, eight-hundred-and-forty square feet, side yard setback at thirteen feet, and then the building height at twenty feet.
And isn't there a combined, uh, there's no combined, the combined, uh, is okay?
The combined is okay. The combined requirement is just for the principal building.
So it's the right side?
Correct.
Thirteen, where twenty?
Yes.
Let's see if the board has some questions for you.
Okay.
I'll start on my left. We'll go right down.
No, sorry.
Any electric gonna be in the pole barn? You will have electric.
We'd like, like to run a sub-panel back there for, you know, garage door opener, lights.
Plumbing?
Plugs. No plumbing.
No plumbing, thank you.
Sir, is up-
You were looking to park an RV?
No, well, the, the RV would be mainly parked outside, but, you know, if you wanted to pull it in to do work on it, the RV, you, you need at least thirteen-six for, for the highest RV, so that's why we're trying to stay with a fourteen-foot-high garage.
So if I'm, I'm looking at that picture, how do you drive the RV back to the barn?
Oh, there is, there is an existing, on the left-hand side of the house, there's an existing driveway that goes back, which services the existing, the old barn. There is a driveway down the left, gravel driveway down the left-hand side.
So it's not, it's, is it-
It's not deflected, deflected on the plan.
It's not illustrated, right?
No.
I'm not missing it, right?
No. But there is a, there is a gravel driveway that's been-
You have the room.
Oh, yes.
I'm good for now. All right, we know you're stuck with the one, uh, it was a pre-existing setback, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, it was non-conforming.
It's not being exacerbated, and the building's actually been made smaller, but, but taller.
It's coming down in size, but, uh, you having a second floor on it, did you say?
Sec, on, on the new, on the garage?
Yeah.
Um, yes, it'll be in, in the back, you can see where the shape, where the, like, the, the lined area is on the back. That's like roughly ten by eighteen foot, which would be like an office for upstairs.
Okay, an office?
Mr. Weber, I think they're talking about the pole barn.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Oh, the pole barn?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, no, that's, that's all just gonna be just open, yeah.
Just open?
Yeah.
Okay. No plumbing, you said?
No plumbing, but we do wanna put electric back there with a, you know, a sub-panel would have electric for outlets and, and lights.
Very good. Ms. Ms. Andrews? Counselor, you have anything for me?
I don't have anything.
And nothing else from you, Mr. Hollihan, right?
I just wanted to make a note to Mr. Weber. I know he did put on the record that he'd be storing the RV outside.
Yes.
I just want to make you aware that we do have an ordinance section that limits outdoor storage of vehicles, specifically campers, to five thousand pounds. I would assume that this vehicle's larger than five thousand pounds. So if you wanted to store it on the residential property, you would have to keep it inside that pole barn at all times. Just-
I didn't know that.
For the record.
So that would take up the whole pole barn? Can I make the pole barn bigger? Uh, really? So, so when you drive down, is everybody that has RVs, they're, they're not compliant?
If they're over five-
You're on your ordinance.
Yeah, I'm just telling you what the ordinance is, yeah.
Okay. All right. No, we'll, we'll leave it as is.
You noticed for the twenty-four by thirty-five, so.
Okay, let's leave it as is. Right now, it's at my, they're keeping it at my house. I'm just wanna get it out and get it back to their house.
Don't tell us where you live.
I do live here in town, lived here in my town all my life.
Okay. Uh, anything else you wanna tell us right now?
I, no, unless you-
Let me go to the public portion, I'll come back to you.
Unless you have any more questions, sure.
This is, uh, thirty-nine-dish twenty-two-five-Z. The physical location on this is four-seven-two Tystown Road. It's a, uh, an addition, exa, uh, existing home and rebuilding, uh, the attached garage, which is gonna be demoed. Anyone here in the courtroom this evening wish to be heard, just raise your hand. Come forward, sir. I need a microphone for-
You can take this one.
We're gonna have, do it right from there. We have a setup. Sir, this is quasi-judicial, uh, under, undergoing, so the board attorney has to swear you in, 'cause your testimony will be under oath.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And can you state your name and spell your last?
Jeffrey Penksa, P-E-N-K-S-A.
P-E-N-K-S-A, and your address?
Four ninety-eight Tystown.
Four ninety-eight Tystown.
Mr. Penksa, what'd you wanna tell the board?
Um, I'm the neighbor on the left side that's below their property. Um, I've talked to Mr. Weber a few times, 'cause we're neighbors, basically, and, uh, he did a great job re, all the work they did to the house and the yard work. And I'm not too concerned what they wanna do with their pole barn and this new addition. I just have a small concern to bring it up to the board now. It's, right now, if you look at the driveway, it's, it's all going across the corner of my property. I just wanna make sure that's, it's, will be on his property. That's all I need to know. I've talked to him about it, he's agreed. It's just that he says it's not on this print right now.
Is that show on the survey?
No.
Yes, let me-
Okay.
So this is-
Yep.
Tystown Road here, which actually cuts through Mr. Weber's property, um, and the neighbor's property here. I believe what he's talking about is this section of driveway here that is used to access this property, but encroaches slightly onto his property. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then, Mr. Weber, are you okay-
Yes.
-with realigning that driveway? Okay.
We can make that-
Yes, it will be, it will be realigned, and that will not touch on to, uh, your neighbor's property.
The driveway is gonna be repaid, but it's not gonna be, unfortunately, it's not gonna be repaid publicly for springtime, and it, it, it'll, it's gonna be moved over finally when it's paid. And as of now, uh, even though it's deflected on, on the, the survey here, I don't believe we're using it now. I think we're, we're pretty much on, on the-
You're agreeing to, to, to accomplish that?
I am agreeing to accomplish that.
Would, is that satisfactory to you?
That's fine. We discussed it before, but I just wanted to bring it up, so it's finalized, and we don't come back next year and say, "You didn't do it," you know?
Okay. If the board acts in favor, that'll become part of the resolution.
Okay. I appreciate-
Thank you.
Be a condition.
Correct.
Thank you. Anyone else here in the courtroom this evening wish to be heard on this matter? This is the last call for that. Public portion is now closed. Back to you, final comments.
I have no more comments unless anybody has any more questions.
The board doesn't seem to have any. Uh, I'll go around again, again, if anybody wants to before, uh, I'm assuming you're gonna call for a vote.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So if anybody has any questions now would be the time. Nothing on my left, nothing on my right. Counselor?
Chairman, if I can just add-
Go ahead, Mr. Hollihan.
If Mr. Weber agrees that there will be no commercial activity outside of that pole barn?
No commercial activity, we agree to it.
Thank you.
It would only be used personally if you're-
It's only gonna be used personally.
Washing it or whatever you need to do inside, right?
Correct.
It's not gonna be a mechanical shop.
No.
All right. Satisfactory?
Yes.
Counselor, we have two C variances, right? I'm sorry, three.
Three.
One, one for the pole, uh, the size of the pole barn, which is eight-hundred-and-forty square, where six-hundred is allowed. Uh, one for the height for, I believe it's gonna be twenty, where fifteen is allowed. And then the side yard, which is thirteen, where twenty required.
Correct.
All right. Everybody understand that? Can we take them as a bulk, or do you wanna do them separately?
Yeah, we can take it as a bulk.
Well, two, do them as a bulk for all three. Someone interested in moving up for approval?
Gomez, I move it for approval.
Is there a second to Ms. Gomez?
Izzo.
There is a second. Vocal, please.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
I'm in favor, just make sure you take care of your neighbor, okay? Make sure that gets straightened.
They're good people.
You've re, received an approval, there'd be a resolution available by the next meeting.
Chairman?
I believe that's, okay.
I believe there was no vote on the combined side yard for the addition.
I thought you said three. Did I miss one?
Four, yeah.
Four?
Three for the, three for the pole barn, one for the house.
Okay.
We'll take that separately.
Combined, what's the size, please?
So the proposed is a combined of twenty-nine-point-three-nine feet. I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong one. It's a proposed of thirty-point-three feet, where forty feet minimum is required for the combined side yard for the addition.
Forty point-
For the addition or the pole barn?
The addition.
The addition.
Thirty-point-three, where forty is required, right?
Forty required.
All right, boards, combined side yard, right? Someone wanna move that?
I'll move it, Scogno.
Is there a second?
Izzo.
Move in the second, vocal, please, as to the combined.
Ms. Andrews?
I'm good, yes, thank you.
All right.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes, now you're good. Resolution by the next meeting, okay, sir? Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you for being here. Okay, the, uh, second one we have is forty-one-dish twenty-two-five-Z Nancy Lowe. This is, uh, zone R twelve, medium density, uh, block one-seven-zero-one-one, lot four. Physical location sixteen Schindler Drive North. This applicant is proposing to replace an existing deck and construct a sunroom. Requires C variance. Who's ever gonna be testifying? Okay, you can come forward. Could we have the second microphone placed over there? Okay. You're Nancy Lowe?
Hello, hello.
And this gentleman is?
My husband.
Okay. All right, the board attorney will swear you in.
Are you both gonna be testifying? Okay, so raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is the whole truth and nothing but the truth? One at a time, can you state your name and spell your last?
My name is Eddie Cheung.
Spell your last name.
C-H-E-U-N-G.
All right.
I'm Nancy Lowe, my last name is Lowe, L-O.
Common spelling on Nancy, N-A-C-Y? N-A-N-C-Y?
N-A-N-C-Y, yes.
You can both be seated. I would ask you to talk directly into the microphones like I am.
Okay.
So that the TV can pick you up and properly record it. As I told the applicant before you, what the board needs to hear is the who, what, the why, the where, of what you're doing, why you're doing, and how you're accomplishing that. If you have any exhibits, and I see you do, I'm gonna ask you to give them to Ms. Porcelli.
Yes.
Who will wind up letting the board, when it's appropriate time, the board will, the board attorney will look at them and see, and then the board would, may accept that as evidence. Uh, I'll go to, uh, Mr. Hollihan. He's gonna tell us why you're here for a variance. Once again, you may have questions, we may have questions. I still have to open up a public portion after your testimony? You can decide whether or not you wanna ask me for a vote tonight, and the panel will, uh, take a vote, or if you wish for a continuance, we'll seek a, a continuance from the board, okay? So you can start, go right ahead.
So, um, the reason why we want to apply for the variance is because we just moved into this house a year ago, and when we bought the house, we know the deck was in bad shape, um, but we couldn't do it, we couldn't do anything until after we moved in. And so after we moved in, we actually have someone looked at the deck, and it was built by, I think, the previous owner about thirty years ago. He, he lived there for, for about forty years, so the deck definitely need to be replaced. It was in a very bad condition, very unsafe. Um, but since we moved in, we feel like, like since last summer, we feel like we were able to use it in the summer, but not during the winter. And kind of a waste, because it has a lot of sun in that spot, and, and also there's a lot of bees and mosquitoes. So we decided, maybe, instead of just replace with a deck, we wanna replace with a partial sunroom, like covered it, so we can use it all year long, and then also a small deck. And we didn't really know that, um, there's so many rules and regulations. But then, now we need to a, apply for the variance in order to go ahead.
Another reason why we wanna have a sunroom instead of rebuilding the deck is, uh, is more, more to do with health and safety reasons. I'm not sure if you guys are aware that, um, we live in Foxborough Village, and our neighborhood, our neighborhood has a, has a cat problem. There are a lot of stray cats here, and, um, I, I've, I've seen pictures of, of taking, I've taken pictures of cats, you know, sleeping on my lawn chairs, and, and I have to scoop away cat poop on the deck. And so that, that makes it a little bit of a, of an issue, because, you know, having, I, I love animals, but just not in, not, not on the deck. I mean, having to scoop up poop and, and throw up, it's, it's not my idea of, you know, you know, they can roam outside if they want, but, uh, just down the deck. So that's one of the, one of the other reason why we want to have a sunroom instead of rebuilding, demolish the current deck and rebuild an existing deck.
Understood. What's the size of the deck? Is it gonna be the same size of the one that's there? Is it going to be the same size of the one that's there, or are you using part of the sunroom that would cover some of that area?
Yes, part of the deck will be covered as a sunroom, and the other part will be the deck. So it's basically the same area, the location. I think it might be like one foot or two foot little bit out, but it's basically the same area.
You had some pictures you wanted to show the board?
Yes.
Okay. Can you get them?
Yeah, sure.
Ms. Porcelli will give them to the board attorney, he'll, he'll view them to see. You don't have to say anything yet, he's going to wind up asking about.
I mean, if, in addition to the pictures, we have, do we have the inspection report? We can also furnish you with the inspection report.
I think just by looking at the picture, they could see.
That will give you a, if you guys need it, we can, we can furnish that.
I see six pictures here. Did you guys take these pictures?
Yeah.
And when did you take the pictures?
Just recently.
And it was you?
This summer.
Nancy, was it you who took the pictures?
No, my contractor. He helped to take some pictures. But I also have the inspection, also have pictures if you want to see it.
And the, the pictures depict how the old deck looks today?
Yes.
Okay.
And it was this summer we took it, like recent.
Mrs. Andrews, look at them, press them, come down.
Basically, the beam isn't, isn't bad shape. So either way, we need to have the deck replaced.
I understand your concerns, yeah. While we have, while we have those, I'm going to ask Mr. Hollihan, let him take a look, and then I'm going to ask him why you need a variance.
Ready?
Mr. Hollihan?
Thank you. Yeah, so the applicant is here tonight seeking a C variance for the rear yard setback for the proposed sunroom. So there's an existing deck there. I believe you guys are demolishing the deck, rebuilding a portion of it with a sunroom, and then the other portion is depicted on the plans with a deck. So the overall size of the structure that's currently there is not changing, but that rear yard setback that is proposed at 29.39 feet to the sunroom is deficient where 45 feet minimum is required.
That's rear yard?
Rear yard, yes.
And the sunroom, I see it's got an A-frame roof on it? Right? It's going to have a?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
I, I do want to note just for the board, I'll point you guys over to the left, this dotted line here is the setback required, it's, it's the rear setback line. The existing building encroaches into the rear yard setback. Because this is a roofed structure, it has to comply with the setback of the principal building, so that is why they need this variance. So the deck exists here, but it's uncovered, so it has different setbacks, and it meets the requirement. Once they cover this portion, it has to meet the 45 from the rear yard property line.
So that gray portion you're, you're pointing to, that's the sun?
Yes, so this portion here is the sunroom, this portion here is the, going to be the newly constructed deck.
Oh, that, okay.
The structure as a whole exists currently as a deck. I have nothing further.
Thank you. What's going on inside the sunroom? What are you going to do? Put electric?
Yeah, there'll be electric, no plumbing.
Lighting, you want?
There'll be lighting.
Lighting, yes.
Plumbing?
No plumbing.
No plumbing, it's just, it's for family to use.
Why did you do an A-frame? Just out of curiosity.
It's just, we, just want a little bit higher to have more sun coming in, yes, that's all.
I'm going to go to my left to see if anybody here on the board has questions about this application.
I believe you live in an HOA community, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Do you have a letter of intent from the HOA?
Yes, I do.
Do we have that on file?
Did you submit that?
Yes.
We have it?
Maureen has it, yes.
I have it.
I didn't, I didn't see it.
Yep.
Did you see it?
There's no.
Do you want to look at it?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see the package, honestly.
They're in agreement?
I'll read another records from, it's to the Olbridge Township Planning Zoning Board, reference 16 Schindler Drive North, Lowe Chung, to whom it may concern that this letter will address the variance application for the structure at 16 Schindler Drive North. Association has Article 10 of the Restrictive Covenants, which indicates a unit owner must conform to any setback lines established by the original subdivision. The covenant does not, does give the unit owner the discretion to seek a variance, so the association would defer to the township on any variance application. There are no prohibitions in the governing documents as to placing a structure in the backyard of a single-family home, as long as it conforms to the township board in, in construction code. That's signed by the HOA Board of Trustees, Jennifer Dolan, it looks like, for Carolyn Hol, Holigan or something, the property manager.
Yes, yes.
This is the property manager, and this was given to you?
Yes, she said she can sign for the board precedent, that's what she told me.
We're going to keep that as part of the documents, right?
Okay.
So it's on this?
I guess they're in agreement.
Yeah. Anything else, Mr. Scogner? Mr. Izzy?
I'm good.
I have nothing. Mrs. Andrews? And Mr. Hollihan, did we cover everything? And I'm going to ask Counselor if he has any questions.
I have nothing further.
Is the total square foot the same? The applicants didn't seem to be sure. The footprint, the total square foot of the deck with the sunroom on it?
So the outline, so the existing deck footprint is going to be rebuilt to its footprint, this portion's going to be with a sunroom, this portion will be built with a new deck, is that correct, Mrs. Lowe?
Yeah, it's just to replace.
So the actual, the footprint of the deck now is going to be rebuilt, just part, part of it's going to be a sunroom.
Okay. Does that sound correct?
Yes, correct.
And Mr. Buckley, anything else? Uh, no. You have anything else you want to tell us right now? Because I'm going to, I have to go to a public portion.
Oh, no, that's all, thank you.
Okay, then. This is 41-2025Z, the physical location here is 16 Schindler Drive North. This is for a deck and a sunroom. They're going to replace an existing deck, they're going to take that down and construct a sunroom and, and deck. Do I have that correct?
Correct.
Anyone here in the courtroom, please, wants to speak on this matter, please raise your hand or stand. This will be the only public portion for this matter, seeing none of them close the public portion. Anything else you want to tell us? No?
No.
Would you like me to ask the board for a vote?
Yes, please.
Uh, once again, Counselor, this is just for the rear yard setback. Twenty nine, it's going to be a 29.39 where 45 is required?
That's what I have. Just want to check with Mr. Hollihan.
Is there one more?
It's just for the rear yard setback?
That's correct, yes.
And it's 29.39 where 45 is required?
That's correct.
Okay, board members, someone in favor of moving this application?
Andrews moved it.
Mrs. Andrews moves for approval, is there a second?
Izzy?
Mr. Rizzo seconds, roll call, please.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Izzy?
Yes.
Mr. Scogno?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. You'll get a resolution at our next meeting, which is December 8th, I think, or?
December 4th.
4th, December 4th?
You don't have to come, though.
You don't have to come?
I'll send it to you.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
And you have to, if there's any permits, permitting required, you have to do that through the, through the township, okay?
Okay.
Somebody have the pictures and here's the.
I have, yes, I do.
Here's the letter of intent, too. Which I actually do have a copy.
Thank you very much for hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Enjoy the holiday.
Me too.
Once they clear the next one up, we're going to take the 41-2024Z, that's there here, Hassan. That's block 24, 204, lot 36, the physical location is 12 Yosemite Court in Olbridge, two-story addition and deck. Larry Sachs representing the applicant, this is a C and D variance, this is a continuation. Applicant proposes two-story addition in the rear of the existing home and a deck over an existing patio. Mr. Sachs?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, board professionals, Lawrence Sachs on behalf of the applicant, Zaher Hussein. We were back here, I believe, in September, and at that time, we had provided testimony from our professional planner, Colleen McGurk, and at the conclusion of that hearing, some questions came up about, first of all, some discrepancy between the survey and the architectural plans, and secondly, I think it was an issue raised by Vice Chairperson Chevalier, who's not here this evening, but she came up with a good point, is there any way that we could increase the distance from the proposed addition to where the conservation easement is located, and also if we could consider reducing the footprint of the house? So we went back to the drawing board. First of all, we did reconcile the issues between the survey and the architectural plans. We reduced the footprint of the house, and as a result, we also reduced the FAR. The FAR, I think, being requested was almost .22, and we reduced it down to .19. .17 is the zone requirement. We also increased the landscape area ratio by reducing the footprint of the house, and we also reduced the impervious coverage, even though we didn't need a variance for impervious coverage. So essentially, the plan that you have on the screen shows a reduction in the, in the depth of the proposed addition from 16 feet to 14 and a half feet on one side and 13 feet on the other. The discrepancy regarding the survey and the architectural plans dealt with, I think, a mistake made by the surveyor, where he showed steps and a patio being within the conservation easement, and that was not the case. There's actually a recessed staircase here. So, you know, with that said, we, we, obviously, the recommendations made by Ms. Chevalier and also by Ms. Sawant, to at least provide a little bit more of a buffer between the conservation easement and the end of the house, I believe, have been accomplished.
Do you know what the number came down in the LAR?
I know the LAR, the existing LAR is .80. The LAR requirement in the zone is .85, so actually, when the house was built, it didn't, it didn't comply with the LAR. It, it's a slight increase in LAR because we're picking up some green space.
Metropolitan Estates didn't, didn't comply?
Didn't comply. I would, it's probably a 1% increase, I would think. Yeah.
In the right direction.
In the right direction, correct.
Anything else, Mr. Sachs?
No, that's, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Let me see, Ms. Sawant?
So, thank you, board, thank you, Chairman. The applicant, after, one of my concern was that the steps had their landing within the conservation easement, so, and plus, the FAR seemed to be significantly higher than some of the homes in the neighborhood. Mr. Sachs met with us, with Danny and myself. There has been revisions to the floor plan. The building footprint was reduced such that there is like a three-foot buffer, which I had requested from the conservation easement. The stairs have been redesigned to move them away from the conservation easement, and as a result, so the existing home is 3,662 square feet. The proposed addition now is 1,356 square feet, so the total square footage of the house with the addition is 5,018 square feet, which translates into .198 as the FAR. So the previously proposed FAR was 0.22, so there's a significant change there. With the landscape area ratio, the landscape area ratio has gone down to 0.79 instead of .8, so that, that is the 1%. But overall, I think they've made a lot of attempt to revise the floor plans. Danny and I had no further questions. I didn't think it was necessary to update the review memo, because I wanted to personally be there for the hearing, so I think I'm good.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sawant, and thank you, Counselor, and your team for bringing the matters back to the board in, in a favorable position, and I think Ms. Chevalier, who couldn't be here tonight, you, I think, settled what she had in mind and what the board was questioning, particularly the way that it was situated. Everything went in the right direction. Let's see if there's any questions. I'm going to start on my left. Ms. Gomez?
No, I'm good.
Spinelli, no?
Mr. Sachs, do we clear up the conservation area? They can use it, they can't use?
Yeah, so they, they can use it, but they can't obviously build any structure within that conservation.
Use it like what?
They could use it for passive recreation, they could sit there if they want, they could hike there. You know, the, the property is a fairly large lot, it goes back quite a distance, but you just can't.
Set up a gazebo?
Well, that would be a structure. No, we can't put a structure in there.
Then a permanent structures.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but you could put a, certainly, you could put a lawn chair in there if you wanted to.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Rizzo?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have nothing, I've already made my comments. Mrs. Andrews?
There was some, there was some question regarding if there is no HOA, and are there any detention basins, and if they are there, who's taking care of them?
That I can't answer.
I don't think, can I?
Yeah.
Can I interrupt? I don't think it is related to this particular lot as such.
I can, I can.
Ms. Chevalier brought that up.
So I, I did do some research after the last meeting. The resolution when the subdivision was done said that there was supposed to be an HOA established, there never was. The homeowners have kind of created their own HOA, but there is no official HOA for this development, so I'll defer to Mr. Buckley, but I'm, I would be okay with, I think, the board proceeding without an HOA letter, because there is, there is no official HOA.
If there's nothing on paper, then there wouldn't be in anybody to issue the letter, so I'd be okay with that.
And I believe even this has come up in the past when it comes to management of basins and sidewalks and stuff like that, and there is no HOA, that is my recollection.
That is your recollection?
Yes.
Okay, there was also a question of where was the water going to flow?
Well, actually, I think if you look at the topography of the property, it actually pitches away from the house and into the conservation easement, and that's how it was designed. See, if you look at the, if you look at the elevations, you go from 62 in the front to 58 in the back, and I'm sure it even goes lower than that.
Okay, it was mentioned, the basement wasn't included in the square footage, it was supposed to be used only for storage, there could be nothing else used?
Yeah, it's, and there's no walkout basement proposed.
That is not included in the square footage?
Correct, that's correct.
So could that be part of the resolution, that the basement can only be used for, for storage?
Well, the basement is not being finished. Certainly, if they decide to finish it, they could certainly apply for a permit, but.
But I believe we changed the definition of the floor area where basements are exempt from the floor area, so I think it's not fair to restrict a homeowner from using his own basement, especially, there used to be a time when our floor area ratio definition
there used to be a time when our floor area ratio definition was, used to require basements. If it's finished, then it has to be included in floor area ratio. But couple of years ago, I believe it was like almost seven or eight years ago, the, because there were so many homeowners coming back to the zoning board, the Council made that, that change, and I was the one who authored the definition. But now, a finished basement is also excluded from the floor area ratio. So whether they finish it or not, how they use it is completely up to the homeowner.
So if you put another kitchen and another bathroom in, that's okay?
No.
No.
So, no.
That's a finished basement?
So the definition of a...
I had one in my home.
The definition of a dwelling unit includes living facility, sorry, bathroom facilities and cooking facilities, a combination of both. If they wanted to finish the basement with one or the other, they could. They wouldn't require an additional de-variants from the Board because, like Vina said, the finished area of a basement doesn't count towards the floor area of the existing dwelling. So they could finish the basement, they could technically put a kitchen down there as long as they don't have bathroom facilities. Vice versa, they can put bathroom facilities as long as they don't have a kitchen.
Okay, so, but then would it be considered a part of a living space? Would it then count the amount?
If they put in, it's a completely different ballgame then, because if you have a kitchen and a bathroom, then it is technically a new dwelling. And then they would have to come back to the zoning board because then it becomes accessory dwelling unit or two-family home. So they would have to come back to the Board. However, they could choose to put just a bathroom in the basement, or they could choose to put in an additional kitchen island, but not a bathroom. They cannot have both. If they put in both, then it's a dwelling unit.
Okay, thank you.
And that's a standard for all the homes in Old Bridge. Now, if somebody has done that illegally, then it's a different story. But otherwise, the Board or the zoning office does not allow any home to have a kitchen and a bathroom.
Okay, I'm sorry I didn't live in Old Bridge at the time because I was paying taxes. A finished basement.
Right. And with that explanation, I don't think it would be appropriate to add a condition of a basement. I agree. All right, anything else, Mr. Sax?
No, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'm going to go to the public on this. What number do we have on this? Forty-one?
Forty-one.
Yep, forty-one dash twenty-twenty-four Z. Physical location is twelve Yosemite Court. Anyone want to be heard on this matter, please raise your hand or stand. Once again, this will be the only public portion. If you have something to say, please do it now. I see none. I'll close the public portion. Final comments, Mr. Sax, Henny?
No, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think you hit the nail on the head. We, you know, we obviously listened to the comments from the last hearing and, and did our best to...
We did it a few times, but we got it, we got it right.
That's correct.
Okay, well, thank you for your cooperation. Board members, there's two votes here, Counselor, right? An FAR and then a C-variants for the landscape area ratio.
Correct.
The FAR is at, is at 1.198 where 1.7 is max, right? If I have that correct? Yeah.
1.17 is required. The existing is .155, and the proposed is .198.
If the FAR passes, then we'll move on to the bulk. Anyone interested, moving to D4 for the floor area ratio.
Izzo.
Is there a second?
Gomez.
Roll call, please, as to D4.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogni?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli, I'm sorry. Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Now, as to the landscape area ratio, someone want to move that for a C-variants?
Izzo.
Is there a second to Mr. Izzo?
Second.
I have a second. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who is the second? Oh, sorry. Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scogni?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Sax and, and the applicants.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the Board.
Enjoy the upcoming holidays, sir.
You too.
All right. Final application for the evening? Go ahead. You want a break? Sure. Get set up, just a quick bathroom trip, and we'll go on recess less than, just say five minutes, but we're going to, I'd ask everybody to come back as soon as possible.[734.75]
But, and I don't want to repeat everything, of course. And in fact, we did get a transcript of the last hearing, which Maureen was kind enough to distribute to everyone. So that if any were not here, you could hear it. And those who are here could refresh.
For the record, Councilor, I believe Mrs. Spinelli did sign a statement.
Oh, right.
It's Mrs. Spinelli.
My correct?
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Okay, great. And so, but I think, so, and as the Chair indicated, we're here for an appeal of the zoning officer's determination denying the continued certificate of occupancy, the continued operation of this business, this adult entertainment business that has been ongoing, like I said, since early 90s. I do think that it's probably helpful, due to the passage of time, that I do just sort of, you know, reiterate and maybe summarize what was presented last time, what was by virtue of the facts and also the applicable law. Because I think it's important. And frankly, when I started preparing for this, I didn't remember what happened last time. So I, I'm sure it's a, it's a tough recall going back six months ago. In any event, so, so just to clarify, I think we're here on a, on a fairly limited issue. And so, we're usually, or oftentimes, an appeal is based on a, of a zoning officer's determination is based on an interpretation. For example, a zoning officer says, hey, your proposed use is not permitted in the zone. And the applicant says, oh, I think we are permitted. And then that goes to the board. Here, it's, it's, there's no question that the, that the use that has existed since 1990 is not, is not permitted, is not permitted in the R5 zone. It's residential zone. However, it is a, the applicant's position is it is a pre-existing non-conforming use that has operated and existed from that time. And as such, there, you heard testimony last time, as set forth, as you saw in, in the transcript when you reread it. The testimony was given by the prior owner of, of the business, Mr. Spallero, the principal of which was Mr. Spallero. And Mr. Spallero, Spallero went into great detail with regard to the operation of the business leading up to the change of ownership to the existing owner. And he went through in, in great detail about all of the, about the operation when he first took over in 2022, when he acquired the business, the ongoing business from family members, bringing it all, bringing it all the way up through the fall of 2024, when the applicant, 1103 Route 35, the principal of whom, of which is Jonathan Olin, who's here with us this evening as well, closed on and acquired both the business and the property. And what you heard last time from Mr. Spallero as the owner from 2022 until the sale in 2024 were the details of the ongoing nature of the business. And that is, when he first took it over, and I'm summarizing here, it was all testified to last time. I don't want to waste the Board's time in, in repeating. But it was all testified to about those details. When he first took over in 2022, he operated it exactly the same as it had been operated for, since 1990, for those three and a half decades. At some point in 2023, you heard that Mr. Spallero's testimony was that he made a business decision to scale back the operation and change it a bit to go to, rather than being open daily, to be opened only, for appointment only for private parties. Same use, same adult entertainment use, same building, same food, same alcohol. And he went into a lot of detail about all of that. And then he went into a lot of detail about all of the things that he did in continuing the operation of the business. Ordering liquor, paying utility bills, paying for his, and keeping and maintaining his food license, paying for and maintaining his liquor license, advertising the business as, as an, as, as an existing, ongoing adult entertainment business as Jersey Girls on the website, signage at the site saying "private parties", and, and all of those things. Maintaining a fully stocked bar, maintaining the property. And if the Board will recall, we had submitted, and it was marked as A1, and attached to our letter brief, setting forth the law, was a series of exhibits which set forth documentation about all of those, all of those items. We, we attached the liquor license. We attached the contracts for the private parties going through 2024, when, when he had made the decision to change the intensity of the operation, the maintenance work that I, I referenced, the fire inspections and utility payments. And we, we attached all of those as exhibits. It's on the record, you guys, you guys have that. So I'm not going to go into that any further, unless, of course, the Board has, has any questions. And so that was kind of the factual testimony that took up, you know, the majority of the hearing last time. But I also want to real brief, sort of recap the applicable law. That is, what is the law that should be applied by you as Board members, you know, in analyzing whether or not this, this pre-existing non-conforming use had been abandoned, right? Because that's what it comes down to. We have the zoning officer who issued a determination that the use had been abandoned. Now, under the law in New Jersey, it's, it's pretty clear, and it's outlined, I think, pretty well, as clearly as we could in the brief. So we looked to two, we looked to three places, right? We looked to the municipal land use law. We looked to the case law that interprets the municipal land use law. And we looked to your local zoning ordinance here in Old Bridge, which, all of which we cited. And what the law says is, as I said, very clear. The law in New Jersey is very protective of a pre-existing non-conforming use, right? It's a valuable right that is not abandoned lightly. Because if it's abandoned, can't use it for that use anymore without coming back to this Board for, and starting over for a D1 variance. So in order for a pre-existing non-conforming use such as this, which existed going back to the early 90s, the law says what has to be established, what has to be proven, what has to be indicated is a two-factor, a two-factor, two factors that are components of what must be established to take away that valuable right of a pre-existing non-conforming use. One is an intention to abandon, right? An intention to abandon, meaning, and you see from the case law that's in the brief, it's not equivocal, it's not vague. There has to be a demonstrable intent to, for, by the owner of that pre-existing non-conforming property right use to say, I'm no longer going to ever use it for that use again. I'm going to use it for something else. I'm going to change it to a restaurant. I'm going to change it to a, a clothing store. I'm going to change it to a gym. And so unless there is a showing of an, of a clear and unequivocal intent to abandon, that right remains. That right remains. Now, we had a continued use here, right? We had the use continued right up until it was conveyed till '24 in the form of, at the end, the private parties for the adult entertainment. But the way the law is, and the case law interpreting it is, even if there had been no activity, as long as there was an, an intent to abandon that use, the use remains in place. The use remains unabandoned, if you will. So for example, someone could decide, I want to go on vacation for a week, a month, a year, six months, and I'm closing the business. I'm not abandoning it, I'm not giving it up forever. Or I want to close the business because I'm sick, I'm retiring, I'm doing other things, whatever that may be, I'm going to market it for sale. But the closing of the business is not the end all be all, is not the determination of an intent to abandon. It has to be much more significant than that. So we need the intent to abandon. The second prong, and it's an and, not an or. So you have to show an intent to abandon, and you have to be able to show an overt act or failure to act, which carries a sufficient implication that the owner neither claims nor retains any interest in the subject matter of the abandonment. Again, similar concept. You got to not only show that they did something to, not only that they had an intent to abandon and never use it for that use again, you had to, you'd have to show some overt act that demonstrates that. Here, we submit, and as, as, as the Board heard from Mr. Spallero's testimony, there was never any intent, much less any overt act, showing that he never wanted to use this as a, as an adult entertainment use. In fact, and one of the things I haven't mentioned yet, is that at some point in, during his ownership, 23, 20, 2023, 2024, he marketed the property and the business for sale as an ongoing adult entertainment business. He hired a broker to do that, who was, who advertised the property as an ongoing business, an ongoing adult entertainment business. And so, all of that indicia was all testified to last time. And I do also, we did also hit, as, while we're on the law, and I'll finish up in a minute, we also, as I said from the outset, we looked, we look to the zoning ordinance here in Old Bridge as well. And, you know, lo and behold, what we find is that, which is, should be the case, is that the, the, the language in the Old Bridge ordinance mimics that of the state law. And it says that a non-conforming use shall be deemed to be abandoned where there is an intention to abandon and an external act or omission to act by which such an intention is carried into effect. Now, there is language also in the ordinance here in Old Bridge, which adds to the state law, I would say. It says, "It shall be prima facie evidence that a non-conforming use has been abandoned when there occurs a total cessation, total cessation of such use for a continued period of at least one year." And as you heard last time, and as we set forth in the brief, A, there was never a total cessation of the use. There was never an intention to abandon this use forever. There was never a total cessation of it. It changed in, it changed in intensity, it changed in frequency, but it continued as the adult entertainment use that it has been going back the, the decades, back to Jersey Girls back in 1990. So, and what's interesting, and what I think, if maybe some of you have, and I had, I looked it up myself, I didn't quite remember from my law school days, in that language which says prima facie evidence that a non-conforming use has been abandoned is where there's total cessation. Prima facie evidence means that that is enough evidence, that there is enough indication to assert the claim. That is, okay, it looks as though I have prima facie evidence that it seems like the use was, there was a total cessation of the use. It's not dispositive, it just simply means that is absolutely rebuttable, can be disproved by the actual facts. And that's, by definition, is, is prima facie. So I would submit to you that not applicable here, because we had the continuation of use. But even if this business had been closed during the entire time, completely, there was a total cessation of the business during the entire time, whether it be for six months, eight months, a year, or more, it still would not indicate an intention to abandon, and it would not satisfy an overt act signifying or demonstrating the, the intent to abandon. All of the evidence that you heard and all of the testimony is completely inconsistent with an intent to abandon. If you abandon a business and you want to walk away and never operate that business again, you don't maintain your liquor license necessarily, you don't, you know, continue to have adult entertainment parties, you don't continue to have your food license renewed every year, you don't continue to have your fire inspections paid for, inspected and approved. All of those things are absolutely, completely inconsistent with either an intent to abandon or an overt act pursuant to that intention to abandon. So, sorry, I took up a little time in just recapping, but I thought it might be useful. So we all understand, you know, what the Board's mission here is and what the law is that, that the Board members should be applying when they view and analyze the zoning officer's determination that the use had been abandoned. And then just to finish off, in the fall of 2024, the applicant before you this evening purchases the business from Mr. Spallero's entity. He purchases the business, he purchased, he's purchased the real estate, purchased the business, he purchases the goodwill, he purchases the liquor license, all as it had been marketed, and all as set forth in the contract that you have before you as an ongoing business, not a vacant building that had ceased to operate. On the contrary, it continued to be ongoing, continued to be the same use, albeit less frequent than the pre-existing non-conforming use of the adult entertainment business. After closing, the applicant received a notice from the zoning officer indicating that you, this use had been abandoned, and therefore, is it after closing? Had been abandoned, and therefore, you, you have to close, and you can't operate this business that you paid for. And that brings us here. So that brings us here, requesting that the Board apply, apply the applicable law. And your attorney can correct if, if he disagrees with any of my explanations and description of the applicable law. So what I intended to do tonight was, so Mr. Spallero, on behalf of the prior owner, who I think it was, we thought it was mostly, his testimony was the most important because the indication was from the zoning officer that the use had been abandoned during Mr. Spallero's entity's ownership of the, of the business prior to it being sold to the current owner. So we went through all that testimony. I have with me Mr. Spallero back because the Board had requested one, one item. We requested pretty much all of the documentation that we had that we thought was relevant, as I mentioned in my opening remarks. But one thing that was mentioned was the liquor license, I'm sorry, the liquor bills that were incurred to get the liquor that was used for, during, during the ownership of Mr. Spallero, including when it went to the private parties. And we have those, and I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask if we could just have those marked. I think we only had one exhibit marked, Mr. Buckley, last time, as A1. And that was the brief that we had prepared, which had a number of sub-exhibits, if you will, to it. Yeah, that's the June 4th.
June 4th, 2025.
That's the June 4th, 2025, letter brief. And then when we submitted that as A1, and then that had attached to it exhibits A through N, and we, we marked it, that's it. And we marked it as sub-exhibits to A1. So what I'd like to do is, you have A2 in front of you. What I'd like to do is have, we can get Mr. Spallero up here and just to complete his testimony for purposes of entering.
This one has a sticky.
Oh, yeah, let me see that.
We pre-marked them as all as A2.
And just so the record's clear, A2 is not included in A1.
That's correct.
These are separate exhibits.
That's correct. That was a request that was made, I think, by the Chairman at the last, at the last hearing. After that, Mr. Chair, I have with me, I had mentioned in my remarks earlier that it was the broker who marketed and ended up being the procuring cause of the sale. Just to give the Board his perspective in terms of what was happening at the property, how it was being marketed, and how it was ultimately sold, Mr. Gillith. And then lastly, I have the current owner, Mr. Olin, here, just for some brief testimony on, about his acquisition of the property. So unless the Board has any questions, what I'd like to do is have Mr. Spallero, I guess, re sworn.
The whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
And can you state your name and spell your last?
First name is Anthony, last name Spallero, S.P.A.L.L.I.E.R.O.
Okay, thanks.
Rick, let me just identify myself.
Oh, sure, sorry.
My name is Attorney John Hogan, Law Firm, Melens, Goldman &amp; Spencer, Woodbridge, New Jersey, on behalf of 1103 Lawrence Harbor Corporation, which was the property owner under Mr. Spallero. He owns, he owns 1103 Lawrence Harbor Corporation. Route 35 Associates LLC was the business that he operated. He was also the sole owner of that business. I represent both of those corporations. I'm here on behalf of him as the prior owner. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Thanks. So, Mr. Chair, what I'd like to do is, or Mr. Spallero, first of all, my recap, was everything accurate in terms of your prior testimony that you gave when we were here back in June?
Absolutely, yes, that was correct.
Okay. And then what, what we had handed up to the Board to be, to be entered as A2, if you could just describe for the record what exactly that exhibit is and consists of, and just so, so the, the record is clear as to what it, what it contains.
Yeah, so I think the last hearing we were at, Mr. Chairman mentioned about bringing some invoices for, you know, beer and liquor for when I owned the establishment, which you guys are seeing right in front of you. So you'll see, there's a bunch of different vendors that I use, whether it's High Grade, Short Point, Fed Way. And then this list, and I know Mr. Chairman wanted to make sure and see the license number, which you see, and it also states where it's Route 35 Associates LLC, which is Jersey Girls, that's me, and that's all the inventory that I, that I purchased.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I don't know if the, if the Board would have any, or you or the Board would have any questions with regard to Mr. Spallero. I mean, we, we went through all of his testimony last time, pretty much. I recapped it here, and unless there's questions about A2.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions on A2.
Sure.
Are these invoices a total, all of your invoices for that time period?
Yes, that's correct.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay. And it looks like High Grade, Fed Way, Manifest, or Meritage?
Oh, yeah, it's going to be Meritage.
Meritage. And they are all alcohol companies?
And yes, and you should have Short Point, I believe, as well, too. That's going to sell like Corona, Coors Light, things like that.
Short Point, I do see Short Point. So what time period does this cover?
So that's in a cover, basically. So I ordered all liquor and inventory when I was operational in 2022, like I testified to, open every day, basically. At the end, January of 2023, that's when I testified and mentioned to you about the ABC. And that's when I scaled back a lot of my operation where I didn't want to have a lot of risk. So I scaled back just for private parties and have done private parties since in 2023, 2024. My accountants have, have filed tax returns, New Jersey sales tax returns on the monies that I've received that coincide with the bank statements of the deposit money as well. I believe that's in the brief as well, I, I would, I would assume, as well.
Are you able to estimate the total amount of liquor purchased during that time period?
I would say ballpark, by not adding it up with a calculator, maybe anywhere between 18 to 20,000.
And do you recall how much, the 18 to 20,000, do you recall how much alcohol you consumed in a month?
When I was open regularly or when I did private parties?
Regularly.
Well, it would vary who drinks a beer, who drinks liquor, who comes in and doesn't drink at all, and drinks just bottles of water. So I, you know, it really just depends on the day and the customer.
Okay, and how much did that change when you changed the scope of the business?
When I went to private parties?
Correct.
Oh, yeah, drastically. Because when I did private parties, it would only maybe two bottles. So let's say somebody wants a bottle of Tito's or a bottle of Jack Daniels or Johnny Walker Black. It wasn't like we were having, you know, 10, you know, 12 bottles sold at a party, no.
And they obviously wouldn't be able to bring their own alcohol.
They cannot, yeah, it's a big ABC violation.
Where's anything you bought in '23 or '24?
So the way that I do the liquor and the way that I do the beer, so toward the end of 2022, when you order beer and liquor and you order by the case, that's going to, that brings your, your, basically your cost, your case price down. So what I do is I'll order bulk toward the end of the year to make sure I have enough liquor and beer, make sure I stake the savings on that for bottles or whatever it's going to be. So you're not going to see '23 or '24 because the amount of liquor and rip checks that I got from all the ordering that were stocked into the inventory itself. So you'll probably see some pictures in the brief as well, where it shows on the speed racks all of the liquor that was there stacked fully as well, too. So when I went to private parties, I had sufficient liquor that I had for, to do those private parties.
All from 2022?
Yep.
Just what you bought here, you carried for two years?
Yes. Yeah, it was, because the end of the year of '22.
Right, I see that.
And then it's like four weeks, you pay in 2000, you have like a four-week.
But you had parties in '24, two years later.
Yeah, and '23.
You still sold the same beer that you bought in '22?
More liquor, but, you know, my, my walk-in boxes that I have always have the beer pretty cold. But for the most part, all the people would buy was be liquor, like, you know, bottles of liquor.
Do you have the sales tax receipts for the parties that you held then?
I do.
That you sent to the state in New Jersey?
I do.
Can we see those?
Sure.
Because you have to pay a monthly sales tax.
Yes, you do.
I had, I had submitted, Mr. Chair, the actual contracts for the parties.
That was merely for the fact that he didn't lease out his property to anybody. So those, if that's what you're talking about, exhibit, from the auditor?
Exhibit J.
Exhibit J?
Yeah.
I have that here.
Okay, yeah, so those were the contracts for the private parties?
Right, right. And then, then obviously, if there's a thousand dollars.
March 24, November 24.
There's a thousand dollars, the taxes, the state gets taxed on that for January of '24. There's a thousand dollars, the taxes, the state gets taxed on that for January of '24, February, March of '24, there was a thousand dollars, so the sales tax was due on that.
Yeah.
And then, of course, on 9/3/24, $1,200, so there'd have to be a sales tax paid on that.
Okay.
And I guess the rest of the tax would indicate zero because you, you weren't open, I guess, right? Or?
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna, I'm gonna set up, send up to you, I guess, what was marked as A3.
Mr. Buckley, see that first, please? Looks like a four-page document from New Jersey Division of Taxation. Just need somebody to testify as to the contents, yeah.
Mrs. Spallaro, for the record, if you could just describe what, what has been marked as A3?
Yeah, so this is New Jersey Division of Taxation, so for monies received from the party and then deposited into my checking account, and then we pay based on the money received from the parties to the New Jersey sales tax, which will show you like total gross receipts and what the taxes do.
Oh, and then we had A4.
So this is gonna be my 2023, the federal tax return that would be, that my accountants did too as well, that shows like my gross receipts for private parties.
The company?
Yes, correct.
Which company?
This is for Route 35 Associates.
Which is the operator of the?
Of the gentleman's club.
And what do they show for sales?
Testify as to the numbers that are in there.
Uh, A4, US income tax total gross sales, $8,327.
The federal income tax? You're talking about state sales tax?
Oh, A3. Yeah, first quarter, oh, no, it says, yeah, yeah, okay, so first quarter, gross sales 2050. Uh, 2024.
And were there any sales after the first quarter?
So quarter three, 1,200. And, and, yeah, and I already said quarter one, yeah, so quarter three.
You, you can, let me just ask you, you have, you have other documents that you could provide, provide showing the rest of the year?
Uh, yeah, from the accountant that you get. Correct, yep.
But answer the question, did you have sales in all four quarters of 2024?
I had sales in, I, I can't answer that because I don't know if it's first quarter or third quarter and fourth quarter.
Until you sold. Well, you sold in October of '24.
Correct, yes.
So that indicates records of the first quarter and the third quarter?
Correct.
First and third, Mr. Chair, we could get you the second, second quarter.
Of '24?
Yeah.
What, '23?
Well, you have, you have the tax return.
No, the state sales tax.
Uh, yeah, I'm sure my accountant could pull that, yes.
I know we asked for the?
Liquor inventory.
Liquor, the liquor invoices. I thought through counsel, we also asked for the state sales tax or?
Uh, no, I don't believe we ever had that conversation.
Well, I see you brought one, so I assume we must have.
No, there, there wasn't a request, he just happens to have it.
Oh, okay, you happen to have, you happen to have the other ones?
The 2023 does have the, you know, gross receipt for sales of 8,327 for the year. So there were sales of $8,327, which would have been reported as?
In?
That's for 2023, according to the US tax return.
And that's A4?
That's A4. So that's, your 2023 would show the year's sales, so?
Is that specifically for this particular business?
This is for?
Yes, for Route 35 Associates LLC.
Doesn't, Route 35 Associates doesn't own any other liquor license?
Route 35 does not own any other liquor license.
Can we see those?
Oh. Yeah, I was the only one who saw them.
Yeah, he didn't show, no, he wanted you to explain them.
I wanted you to explain them.
He wanted you to explain them.
If there was a copy machine, we'd be happy to make as many copies as everybody needs. Maybe we can do that. And I thought, we didn't know you wanted those, so we would have brought copies.
And if that didn't get through, I'm sorry, you know, I, I know on the, on the transcript, it was not there. I know that the invoices were there.
That's first quarter, no.
No, but it's, it's very. Oh, okay, okay. Got it, okay. Yeah, correct. We have all four quarters here. And we don't have anything for? Mr. Holahan, what's, could we narrow down the date here that we're talking about on, on, on this abandonment issue? Because that's really, I would agree with counsel, that's really all it comes down to.
Yeah, and, and when I had reviewed the application back in October of 2024, it wasn't so much of an abandonment when Mr. Spallaro had owned the property between 2022 and 2024. The question was, before Mr. Spallaro, what was going on there? Because I know Mr. Spallaro just, you had owned it between 2022 and 2024, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And you, when you had purchased the property in 2022, did you obtain a permit from the zoning officer at that time to continue that use as a gentleman's club?
No, at the time, when I, when I recall, after going in front of the township, not the planning, is it the planning?
Council?
Yeah, township council, thank, I'm sorry. Yes, the secretary or whoever at the time, I submitted all my paperwork, did my investigation, did the ABC stuff, wasn't required.
I would let the board know that it is a requirement when you change ownership or change use of a property under 25083 to obtain a zoning permit. I know you did testify that you had signage at the site with private parties. I don't have record of a permit for those. Did you ever obtain a permit for the signage that you had posted?
That's on my, on our main sign. So like our standalone sign, it has like a, like a white box, and then you put like the black letters in, and it just tells like what upcoming event you have or things in that essence.
Yeah, for Chairman and the, and the board, so the annual statements of income and expenses that were filed in the tax office that were made part of the discovery from my office, 2016, 2018, 2021, all which were filed pre-Mr. Spallaro's ownership of that property, indicated to me that at least during those periods of time, there was an abandonment of the use. Right, in comes Mr. Spallaro in 2022. I don't get a permit application to review the change in ownership or change in use, so I don't get to question whether or not there's been an abandonment prior, right? It didn't come until an application was filed on October 2nd, which I know there was some testimony that I had decided on the application post-closing. I, I don't believe that is true. It looks like the property was sold on September 5th. There was a deed executed on September 5th. There was an application submitted on October 2nd, and then it was a denial on October 7th. And then October 9th was the closing date, so my denial came before they had closed on the property. But, yeah, the real question was kind of pre-Mr. Spallaro, whether or not there was a abandonment or not of the use. The prongs that were discussed earlier, I agree with the synopsis of kind of what the definition of abandonment is, and then although there is a lot of case law dealing with abandonment, and it's relatively a slippery slope, my understanding and my research showed that, you know, not necessarily Mr. Spallaro, but potentially a previous property owner had abandoned the use as a gentleman's club. From the tax income and expense reports that were filed between 2016 and 2022, along with the overt action of a zoning board application being filed in 2017 to demolish the existing building and construct residential apartments, the combination of those two, my position was that that use as a gentleman's club was most likely abandoned during that time period.
I'm assuming that was, well, I sat on the board, the previous owner. I don't know what the corporation name was, I'm not gonna use personal names, but if you have that, where they applied for?
I can tell you what the project name was. It was the Overlook at Raritan Bay. It was filed around November of 2017.
And then? That's obviously prior to Mr. Spallaro being?
Correct, yes. Correct.
So if we're basing the abandonment on that, and then was never a follow-up, is that basically what happened?
Correct, yes.
What was the result of the Overlook at Raritan Bay application? I guess it was denied or?
It was denied by the board, yes, by way of resolution dated, bear with me one sec. It was denied by the zoning board, though.
Let me see if the board members have any questions.
Could I ask a question?
Oh, sure, go ahead, I'll answer.
Yeah, oh, um, okay, so, Mr. Holahan, a couple of things. One is, so was it your conclusion that be, did you say that because there was an application for a residential use, that that sat, that established an intent to abandon the prior use, even though it was denied?
Well, that, to me, fits one of the prongs of an overt action, to abandon that use by filing a use variance application to demolish the building and build residential apartments. I, I think that's a very clear overt action to abandon the use, yes.
I disagree, and I think the case law would, would establish that. I mean, I have seen properties get two and three and four approvals for two and three, four different uses, but unless and until the change is made and the, the existing use is abandoned, and a new use is one, approved, and two, put into play, that does not designate an intent to abandon the use. It indicates an intent to create alternatives that could be approved, especially when there's a situation where the application gets denied. So I, to the extent that, that Mr. Holahan relied on that, I think that reliance is misplaced, number one. Number two, we did have photos in, with regard, in, in the packet that we submitted of the private party signage on the existing sign, which existed when presumably Mr. Holahan visited the site, and he, he, anyone would have seen that, as would anyone who went into the site during the, the parties. Just hard for me to speak as to the use going back to prior to Mr. Spallaro's ownership of the property, other than to say there was never any, anything issued by your office or any other office as to an improper use or illegal use at the site. The site was obviously purchased by Mr. Spallario, Mr. Spallaro as a, as an ongoing business, and continued that way by him until the time he was sold. To the extent you're suggesting that you hot noted that only at the time of the sale by Mr. Spallaro, as the use having been abandoned, I don't know how many years prior to that, I, I would take issue with that, and the applicant would take issue with that. The other thing I wanted to just address, and we had testified, testimony to that effect, was that notwithstanding the date that you issued your violation or your denial, it was, and I think you had acknowledged this, it was sent to the wrong address, and therefore it was never received by Mr. Olin, the current owner, until after he had closed. I think all of that, while interesting, and really doesn't go to the issue before us, which is, was the use abandoned? And was there an intention, you know, was there an intention to abandon the use? I haven't heard anything from Mr. Holahan that indicates that, other than, from what I see, going for an approval for an alternative use that was ultimately denied. I would submit to you that the case law, and, and more importantly, the applicable statutory law does not, would not support the conclusion that that in and of itself indicates a denial to abandon the use, especially before you ever even got the approval. But really, the applicable determination is, even if an approval was obtained, you'd still have to change the use to that approved use, and that's clear under the law.
Who was at the property when the, I, I saw that in, in the exhibits, that it was mailed, I think, eight months or six months or something different? Because he never got it on time.
It was emailed, yeah, it was emailed to the wrong place.
Original denial?
Yeah.
There was some issue with the denial and it being non-deliverable now. Keep in mind, when I issue permits, denials, they both get mailed and emailed. So although the, Mr. Olin did claim that he received it, or didn't receive it, and then I'd resent it, I had honored the 20-day appeal period from when I resent it. Nonetheless, it, I mean, it should have been Mr. Olin's responsibility to check with my office to see the status on that permit prior to starting his operation, but my decision was rendered prior to the closing date of the property.
But ultimately, there was notification.
Yes.
The present owner was aware of it.
Correct, yes.
We wouldn't be sitting here.
After he closed, yeah, yeah. But I think, Mr. Chair, respectfully, it doesn't take, it doesn't change regardless of that determination. It doesn't change the board's mission here.
No, you brought it up, that's why I wanted to correct it.
Well, no, because he?
Get to the bottom of it.
I wanted to make sure that, that, you know, poor, poor Mr. Olin here didn't get the notice and say, well, I'm closing.
And I want everybody to know he did get it eventually, even though there was a mistake.
After he closed, I'm sorry, after he closed and purchased the business.
Right.
And that's what led us here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That I understand.
Okay.
Let's, let's see if the board has any questions, the witness. Starting down at the end, Mr. Spallaro.
I do have a question. In 2023, you said it was a business decision to go to private parties?
That's correct.
What month?
I'm gonna say I probably made that decision early or mid-February.
So early in the year?
Oh, definitely, yes. Yeah, because Olbridge, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, because Olbridge Police Department came in and ABC during that time and let me know about this. Yes, no, it was about a, an incident that occurred with an underage person, and then a fight or whatnot, and then that's when I was like, I'm gonna scale down and take less risk off of me, is what I, and that's it.
Because I did a quick calculation, and you purchased at the? Okay, because I did a quick calculation, and you purchased at the end of 2022, 142 cases of beer. Does that sound about right?
I, I, if it's on that invoice, then yes.
Okay, so you're saying that the 142 cases was gonna last you two years?
I mean, beer in the, in our walk-in boxes, because they're so cold. But again, not a lot of people came to there and drank beer when they were doing the private events. It was more bottles, so we would, they would do.
Sale?
Believe in sometime in 2023.
So the same year you went to parties, you marketed it for sale?
Yeah.
Mr. Skagno, anything? Mr. Izzo? Mrs. Andrews?
You purchased the property? I was under the impression that you inherited the property.
Yeah, so the property was left to me through my grandmother when she passed away through the estate.
So before
And then I purchased the liquor license from a family member, and then had to go through that whole procedure with the board and township council and the detectives and all of that.
So then before you inherited the property, you were aware that they had wanted to build residential buildings there?
I was aware.
You were aware?
I was aware.
So were you aware then that the building wasn't being used?
It was being used.
How was it being used?
At the same, well, they were operational as a gentleman's club. You know, I think they were open a little bit more. I think they were like six days. But they were also did private parties as well, too. And if I recall correctly, during that time, when they came to the township council, their lawyers at that time would, came up in front of council and told them that they were for private parties, too. It was running to Gattinizio. I think it was that group.
So then even, even after it was denied to have residences, you went back to the same, to the same business?
Not me.
No.
They, yeah, they, they never stopped when they were going through that application. They were always open. And then the, you know, it got denied. The residents rather had the bar than what, what this beautiful structure looked like.
Anything else? Counsel, you have anything?
I just have a couple of questions for Mr. Halloran. So I'm gonna use counsel's analysis, abandonment analysis. If you turn to page page three of his letter brief, right in the center, there's an underlined bold portion, "A non-conforming use shall be deemed to be abandoned where there is an intention to abandon and an external act or omission to act by which such intention is carried into effect." I would agree with that analysis. I think that's well-founded case law. There was some discussion about what you would consider the external act, which we would clarify as the second prong. So my question for our professionals is, what would satisfy the first prong, which is a non-conforming use shall be deemed to be abandoned where there is an intention to abandon? At what point did you decide there was an intent to abandon?
When the use variance application was filed and heard by the zoning board to demolish the existing gentleman's club and construct residential units.
And then the external act, the second prong was that application?
I, I would say either the application itself or the failure to obtain a certificate of nonconformity, right? Is in order to obtain a certificate of nonconformity, after a year of a zone change, you have to visit the zoning board of adjustment to obtain that. To my knowledge, there's been no applications made to the zoning board of adjustment to obtain that certificate. So I, I think that could fit the definition of a failure to act.
I have no further question. Do you have anything based on that?
I, I don't have another question, Mr. Chair. I, I just wanted to just add, just reiterate that the use continued, the pre-existing non-conforming use continued before the application for the use variance, for, for the variance to, for the housing, continued during the pendency of that application, and then continued after that application was denied. Clearly, no one would apply for a different use if it meant that that would establishment, that that in and of itself would constitute an abandonment of a pre-existing non-conforming use. That's just inconsistent with the law.
Anything else, Mr. Halloran?
I have nothing further.
You're not gonna bring anybody else up in as a witness, correct?
I, I don't know that I need anyone else. Mr. Chair, I think we covered everything. I was just gonna have Mr., I just want the board to know, Mr. Olin is here, the current operator. He has actually continued, kind of went back to the more intense use of being open every day, not just, and not just for private parties, although he does do private parties. And we already established that, and he was gonna testify that when he did acquire the business, he acquired the ongoing business and the real estate and never, never thought that there was any reason or necessity of having to take any actions to continue a pre-existing non, non-conforming use that had been in play and utilization at the property since going back to 1990. That was his testimony.
I understand that obviously he's been operating since he signed the deed, I'm, signed the title
Yeah.
Title over, so I don't doubt that he's in operation. Whether he's in operation one day or five, it's irrelevant.
I agree. I agree.
As far as the lapse in the, in the, you know, I, I find it odd that, that it was abandoned. I mean, I find it odd that it was in operation and nobody bought liquor for a year. So I find that, not that that, you know, so, well. That's right. I said no bun, no, that there was no invoices purchased.
Oh, yeah, right, 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 right.
There was no purchasing.
Right. There was definitely liquor
I find that extremely odd.
There was definitely liquor purchased during that timeframe, but at a much reduced rate, obviously.
Well, no rate. Absolutely no. It doesn't seem at any rate.
Liquor purchased by
No, no.
By customers.
I'm talking about the, from a distributor.
Okay, one quick witness.
All right. It's in.
Okay, Mr. Chair, if we could have
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Can you state your name and spell your last?
Okay, Mr. Gillis, if you would, describe for the board your background and experience as a, as a Realtor and broker here in New Jersey.
I'm a licensed New Jersey real estate agent with a company, Belat Santor and Company, in, in Allenhurst. We specialize in hospitality-related businesses and real estate. I, for the most part, almost do nothing but bars and restaurants.
And when were you contacted regarding the sale of this property by Mr. Spolero?
I have an ongoing relationship with the Spolero family, so we were in constant, I had just closed on an additional property of theirs. We decided to, to list the Jersey Girls location in April of 2023.
And how was the property marketed?
Property was marketed as an ongoing concern, a gentleman's club with a long history that was currently only open for private parties.
And did, and you advised all potential purchasers of the nature of the ongoing business?
Yes. For the most part, the people that were interested were in that business, and that was the reason they were
Okay. And how many showings would you estimate you had?
I'd say I'd showed the property six or seven times.
Okay. And like I said, you advised all of the potential purchasers what the pre-existing non-conforming use was?
That was the only reason they were interested.
Okay. And did you over, ever talk to anyone from Olbridge regarding the, the operational status of the property?
No.
Okay. And can you just describe when you were at the property for those six or seven showings, those various times, and probably some more as well, what you observed at the property?
My observation, and it comes from years of experience in the bar business as well, it was fully stocked, ready for any party that could have been scheduled the next day. The beer coolers were full, the speed racks were full of liquor. And as a matter of fact, at least three of the times when I showed the property, the cleaning crew was there, having just cleaned the, the bar, made sure every, all the, whatever garbage was there was emptied. The place was immaculate. And only one of the times that I showed, were they preparing for a party that night?
Okay. And did you also notice as there were some bills that we had submitted with regard to ongoing maintenance that was being done at the property? Did you ever reserve?
Well, like I said, it was, it was always maintained very, very, very well. Twice when I was there, once they were doing, they were replacing a rear door.
Okay.
And another time, they were making some repairs to the parking lot.
Okay. So liquor, so, so fully stocked with liquor, never any question in your mind, and nor was any concern raised by any of your prospective purchasers in that, to that effect?
That's correct.
Questions for Mr. Gillis?
I don't have anybody. If anybody else does, please feel free. I don't doubt whatsoever that, that it was in operation. My point is, I don't know what happened in 2023, but apparently that's not the timeframe we're looking at. So if there was, there was a lapse between 17 and another later date that we're relying on, it doesn't seem that that would be the responsibility of the, the present owner, at least the way I see it.
I would agree with you on that.
Correct.
Unless I'm looking at this wrong.
No, you're correct, Chairman.
I know it's limited operation, and I don't doubt that, that Mr. Spolero was, I know he was there in, in business. And what happened in '23 isn't really on the table here. If he ran some parties in '24, obviously, he did that prior to the sale. And I think the new owner bought that believing in good faith that all those things were correct. It says that in the deed. And he took and signed that deed as well as the president or whatever his title is of the corporation that was selling it.
That's correct.
So I think all that was in good faith. I would assume something happened in, in, going back. And I don't think we can blame that on Mr. Spolero, and I don't think we can blame that on Mr. Olin, in my opinion. The board may see differently, but I, that's the way I see it. I was under the impression that this was a different period of time. And unless counsel feels differently, I think I'm basing it correctly.
I was under the position that we were talking about a different period entirely well, so I would, I would agree with the chairman.
Okay. I'm gonna ask the board if they have any final comments, and I know, then I'm assuming you're gonna ask us to vote on this
Of course.
Letter of denial.
Of course.
Anybody confused about anything, have a question, now would be the time to bring it up. Based, Mr. Skagno, Mr. Izzo, Mrs. Andrews? The board doesn't, I have to open a public portion. I think everybody is here, has to do with this matter, so nonetheless.
You're all on the groan side.
Okay. Okay, I'll leave that alone. This is, I have to open up to a public portion. 63-2024Z, 1103 Route 35 LLC. Physical location is 1103 Highway 35. Here for an appeal on a denial by the zoning officer. Anyone here wish to be heard on this matter? Even if you're with, you're entitled to speak. So don't feel that you don't, you have to or don't have to. Please raise your hand or stand if you're interested in speaking on it. I see now I'm closing the public portion. It comes down to board, absent any questions, I think in good faith, and I think through due diligence, that the zoning officer did what he was, he's paid to do. And what he saw obviously is what different than what I'm seeing tonight. I didn't have the benefit of seeing these invoices, which I asked for. I'm glad that they were brought. I didn't, I didn't have the knowledge of seeing the tax, taxes, and certainly this was, this was rather interesting. Quite a bit of a long read, but nonetheless, it was quite interesting.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. So I'm gonna ask the board for their own opinions in a moment, so we'll take a vote. You would vote yes if we're going to overturn the decision of Mr. Holohan based on his findings? Or you're gonna vote no, that you agree with him? So it's yes, we're going to approve it, or no, you agree with Mr. Holohan? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Andrews?
Let's see. Do we have a first or a second? That's, we did not. Okay, I'll, I'll make the motion to move it. Is there a second for a vote?
Gomez.
Okay, and second for a vote. So it's, if, of, of yes would be we're gonna overturn. A no would be we are not gonna overturn.
Ready?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Yes?
If you say yes, we're going to overturn the, the decision of the, the zoning officer. There's just one decision. Are we gonna overturn? There's only one thing to think about. Are we, are we gonna agree that it was abandoned or not? So if you say yes, we're agreeing that it was not by, by law and by what we've seen tonight. Anybody else confused or have any questions? It is a little confusing, I get that. We have a first and then a second. We'll call the roll slowly.
Okay. Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Skagno?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yeah, in fairness to the, the applicant here, I have to say yes, but based on the, the new facts that we've had. And I still support the findings, however, of Mr. Holohan in, in his efforts to, to protect the township and to protect his job that he's sworn to do as well.
Respect that.
The matter has, there will be a certificate, you'll be open for, you will be able to have, apply again, right, for certificate of occupancy, or is it simply overturned?
With a resolution, I can amend the denial that was issued to you.
Okay.
That's fine.
Appreciate it, counselor?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody here. And have, have a great holiday season, okay? Thanks for coming in. Any further business to bring before the board? Next meeting is?
December 4th.
Yeah, there is no one here, so.
December 4th.
December 4th. Counsel, you have anything you wanna tell us? None?
Not for me, no. December 4th at 7:30?
Dan, anything?
I have nothing further.
All right, I just wanna wish everybody a healthy, happy Thanksgiving coming up next week.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Enjoy your families. Someone move for an adjournment?
Gomez?
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? We stand adjourned.